Okay, good morning, everybody. It's eight thirty. Well, it's time to call the Tuesday, June third meeting to order. And our first item of business is to approve the agenda. And we do have one agenda addition. It's the Clay County Housing and Redevelopment Authority request for board chair to sign certificate of categorical exclusion.
We'll approve with addition.
And we'll put that into the item number three. Okay, we have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say motion carried. Any citizens to be heard today on items that are not on the agenda? Any citizens to be heard on items not on the agenda? We'll move on. Employee recognition.
And we have this working?
This one is.
This one is.
Is it?
Do you hear me or can I open the mic?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So our first one is Karen Jenkins.
Hello, Karen. This is presented in grateful recognition for fifteen years of outstanding and dedicated service to Clay County residents. And she is an office of administrative specialist in probation. Congratulations.
And Debbie, yours reads the same, except for you have twenty years.
Twenty years.
Okay, very good. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I don't see Deborah Benson here.
Not sure she gets it.
Okay. Georgia has thirty years of outstanding service to the county. And this last month or so, George has really been putting in a lot of extra time with the absence of Robbie. You've really come to, you've really helped out the county. We want to thank you for that as well. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have the minutes.
I'd move the minutes of May twentieth and twenty-seventh.
The motions are second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose is the same. Motion carried. Approval of bills and vouchers.
So do approve.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose is the same. Motion carried. All right, our next item is the Recorder's Compliance and Technology Report. Diane, good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome.
Thank you. Morning, Commissioner. Mr. Boo. Okay, so this is my first time.
Yeah, you'll be fine.
Okay. I sent you a memo with the two attachments for the compliance and for the technology account. The first thing, the Recorder's Office was compliant for 2013. That means that we got ninety percent of the recordable documents back within the allotted time. For paper documents, it's ten business days, and for recording, it's five business days. Actually, we were at ninety-five percent last year, and we are at one hundred percent this year. So we're pretty excited about that. So with that news, then we can allocate some dollars for the compliance fund. So did you want, you all read the memo? I don't think, I'm not going to read it or anything.
We've gone, obviously, we've all gone through. I had a couple of questions in terms of the difference between fourteen and fifteen.
Great.
Do you want to go ahead and talk a little bit?
Well, if, about the amount of the money, maybe?
Well, I know that the money is obviously less. And maybe this will become a question more for Brian than for you. But the auditor's salary position, last year, we were able to pay forty thousand dollars of that out of this fund, and now this year it's going to be fifteen.
Fifteen thousand, yes.
So that other twenty-five, I'm assuming, is going to have to be made up somewhere else. Correct, Diane?
Right, just like.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we will look at that at budget time to see what Lori needs in her budget for that.
Okay. But I mean, if the person's going to stay on, I'm assuming we've got to find another source for those funds.
That's correct. She does have a vacant position in it right now, but, so she was good in moving forward with this.
Okay.
And we'll see what it looks like at budget time, so.
And Diane wasn't there when we were discussing this on the committee there. Some of the numbers are down there, too, so.
Right, I agree.
Applying some of that funding towards that position, we decided probably wasn't where it had been in the past.
Right.
At any rate, so we would have had to reduce it, so.
And the position was created in two thousand five, six, when we had thirty-three plats, and we really, our numbers were up. Now, last year, we only had nine plats. So our document numbers are down. Our office alone is down, two full-time people from that, from that time, so we're, you know. And there's just so many other monies that we want to allocate to try to pay for. So the CANVAS system, we should be able to go forward with that and have that all paid for. The amount that we were given from the accessory, you can see, was fifty-seven-five, fifty-seven thousand five hundred dollars to pay for that.
So is this the final payment?
That will be the only payment. She came up with the figures.
Oh, okay.
And it's going to be a company called, I think it was Vanguard.
Okay.
The county will have the same package, software package, as the city of Morehead will have. And I'm still comfortable only with that hundred ten thousand, because I still, I ran another report, and we're still down. You know, starting, the documents are starting to pick up, but this is all hedged on.
Yeah.
Per document. We get eleven dollars per document for this.
Okay.
And the technology account, I put sixty-five thousand dollars for that also, because those numbers are down. And as I said in the memo, we finished up a project that cost us fifty-eight thousand dollars, almost fifty-nine thousand dollars, to preserve our documents for disaster preparedness. So, and one of the things that I would like to move forward with, with the technology is making sure our servers for our new documents, what if something happens? You know, we have backups, but to make sure that is always in the front of mind. Because when I talked to our software company, they kind of, I could, you know, I could pay for that software from them to store it. But they work off of our servers.
Okay.
So if, if something would happen, and we've already sent our documents out after three days, and our systems go down, it's hard to rebuild that if we don't have it properly backed up. And that said, unless there's more questions.
So what is the safeguard for that problem here in this proposal?
The server, we do have appropriate servers now, but there's another, always, technology is always getting better. And, and I would like to be able to help the Tim Dance Department fund that, a better server.
Okay.
For a better offsite.
Okay. All right.
I'll move to approve the Recording Complaints Committee's recommendations.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose is the same. Motion carried. Thank you, Diane.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, our next item, since we're a little bit early here, eight forty-five, item of support, for permanent support of housing proposals. Well, sir's director, Rhonda Porter, Jean Alexander, executive director of Churches United for the Homeless.
All right, we're going to see if we can get this going again here. We're going to have to call Mark in here. Did you?
And Dara too.
I think the whole thing shut down because the power was out. All right, come on up. Have a seat. Dara? You're still as show your, yeah. You could go ahead and get started while I work on this.
Okay, okay. Let me start.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so we have Dara and Jane here today to talk about homelessness in Clay County and a project for permanent supportive housing that is in the plans, in the works. So I'm going to just turn it over to them, and they can introduce and talk about the project.
Well, Jane's getting the technology setup of Sam Dara Lee, and I am the current vice president of the board for Churches United for the Homeless. As soon as this agenda's, item's over, I will change hats and become the director of the Clay County Housing and Redevelopment Authority. This project, though, is of course consistent with the mission of the housing authority. And when you hear about it, hopefully you'll be just as excited as we are to go forward in a partnership to try and address some of the real needs that we have here in Clay County. And I'll give you the preview. We are in the process of putting together a funding application to the Minnesota Housing Finance Agency. As I'm sure many of you know, at the end of the legislative session, they were able to pass a very large bonding bill for this year at the legislature, and one hundred million dollars of that bonding bill was dedicated for affordable housing in Minnesota. Eighty million of that was specifically set aside for housing infrastructure bonds, and one of the top priorities for those bonding dollars is permanent supportive housing. And so, with that background, I'll turn it over to Jean Alexander, who is the executive director for Churches United for the Homeless.
Thank you so much. Hi, welcome. And thank you for having me. I'm really pleased to be here. I'm just going to quickly tell you what you all probably already know about Churches United. It's an amazing collaboration. Oh, how do we keep it from just continuing on? Oh, well, this may, sorry about that. I don't want it to do projection. So, okay. Maybe, oh, darn it. Okay, sorry.
I can give you some more legislative updates if you would like.
Yeah, I don't want to splurge. I just need to.
I can add one more thing in, too. One of the reasons that Rhonda and I thought that they should probably come to board to present is when they make this application to Minnesota Housing Finance Agency, they're asked, the counties are asked to sign a county letter or certificate of confirmation. And so we, we sign off saying that, yeah, we support this project, and then that goes along with their application. So, and then maybe you can talk a little bit about from there, it goes to C.O.
Sure. That county confirmation indicates that we've been in conversation with Clay County while we were putting together this project, and we've had, for Pat, a few meetings with Pat, talking about the needs and the best way to approach this problem and some of the different services that we might have available at the site. What Minnesota housing doesn't want to see are developers coming into a community and having no input from the people who are actually dealing with these issues on a day-to-day basis. And so they want to make sure that the county is aware of the project going forward, and that there's a real need actually established in the community for that project, and that the county's going to be supportive if that project comes to be.
So, thank you for your patience. So Churches United is a wonderful collaboration of many churches that became, in nineteen seventy, twenty-seven years ago, a real safety net for the other shelters that were overflowing. And in the, in the past decades that we've been doing this work, we have really focused on trying to meet the capacity in the, in the community. We've invited in men, women, and families, everybody, except those who are inebriated. And we try very hard to, to meet their basic needs and to offer them a kind of friendship and community, which we call love, grace, hospitality, and service. Because it is Churches United, love is okay, and because it is, we're organized by so many people of faith, it, we really do see each other as equal. The, the, one of the key things about Churches United has been that it is the only shelter in this region that houses men and women heads of household, single heads of household and whole families. It's the only place where boys over twelve can stay in a shelter. So this is a huge thing for families that are trying to stay together. In the last three years, we have seen a remarkable increase in people coming to the shelter. We, in, between the year that ended June thirtieth, two thousand twelve, and the year that ended June thirtieth, two thousand thirteen, we saw an eighty percent increase in children. We have eight family rooms, they're always full, and we have been doing overflow since two thousand eleven, which means that we have mats on the floor of our chapel and our boardroom and various other community rooms in our community center. It, it became clear to us in two thousand eleven that we needed to be, in a, in a place that's so cold, we needed to be part of the promise that makes sure that nobody has to be without a place at night. And that became a large effort, because there was, this is another view of the many things people have when they're staying on overflow. The, the sheltering churches have made this possible, that we keep this promise, that nobody has to be without a place inside at night in this area. It's, it's a promise not every community can make, but this year, eighteen churches participated in this commitment. And this commitment has really changed all of us. I think it has changed, I've been working with homeless, people who've been homeless since nineteen eighty, and I have never experienced so much difficulty in moving people beyond shelter. They stay, our families stay in the shelter for three to five months, and they stay that long, not because they haven't found a subsidy to get housing. They do, they get it from HRA, they get it from Lakes and Praire. They get that in a couple of weeks sometimes. They stay five and, and more months because they cannot find landlords to rent to them. They, they have lots of issues, and they have, we have a very tight rental market. So it is really difficult to move the eight families in our family rooms on, and then these many other families in our overflow. We have had as many as sixteen families in our shelter, eight on overflow, mats on the floor, and then eight in the, the family rooms. And we have had families that are as large as seven children, and a couple families, at one point, we had two families with seven children and a couple families with five children altogether. So that puts our capacity, we have a capacity of ninety-six, based on showers and toilets, and that puts us way up to capacity almost every night. In two thousand thirteen, our, our nightly capacity was eighty, and in two thousand four, no, two thousand thirteen, we were at ninety-three, and in two thousand twelve, we were at eighty, average nightly capacity. And that is because we do overflow year-round. Because of this huge growth, and because we have wanted to keep the commitment to continue to be the safety net to all these people, men, women, families, community center, and shelter, our board, we, we knew this facility was getting small, and we knew that our mission had to accommodate the growing number. So we did a strategic planning, and we came up with five conclusions. We needed to build a fiscally sound business plan to carry out our mission, we have, and are, based on our core values, integrity, empowerment, compassion, resourcefulness, transparency, common sense, and respect, which fell off the wall there. Our second goal was to examine the current shelter facility, determine long-term feasibility and capital needs. This is a picture of our women's shelter room, and it's crowded. The third goal, hugely important to our board and to the stakeholders we surveyed, is to create separate housing and services for the many families and children. Because we invite everybody in at Churches United, and because that is part of its goal mission, it's really complicated to be a child at Churches United. You can never be without, be on the side of your parents, you can't have people over to play. You, we try very hard to normalize their days there with activities and caring adults, but it remains a shelter. It is not home for them. And kind of unanimously, we felt it would be great to have a different place for that shelter, for that shelter work to happen. The fourth goal was to maximize the programming to serve single adults after we moved the families out. And we are a huge, hugely important place for people to reestablish themselves. These bikes are a way to get to work that they, you know, usually several weeks' work gets people out of homelessness. Forty-four percent of people who are homeless in this country are working. We had a stack about two inches high of W-2 forms that came to us for people who were working from the shelter. Our fifth goal was to, was really visionary on the part of our board, and it was to work with partners to develop affordable housing options. This is a visionary step because we have been about shelter and support, but we cannot continue to be about shelter and support until we participate in creating some of the housing that is needed. Because truly, that, that, at capacity level at Churches United will not change until there is some housing created just for the people we're serving. So we have taken this opportunity, along with our strategic plan, along with the church, the sheltering churches that are, have, that, that experience transformed many people in this community to really realize the issue is housing. It is not the difficulties that have defined the people. It's not homelessness. It is a lack of housing. So the sheltering churches have really created a vision for creating housing in the FM area. And I think everybody who met a homeless person who was doing volunteering at the sheltering churches felt that, just imagined that person having a home. And so I think the bonding bill that Dara mentioned gives us a really wonderful opportunity to make what is really a basic human right, housing, a reality. And so we have been working hard with partners in the community to create a plan for forty-one units of permanent supportive housing. It will provide homes for seventeen singles and twenty-four families. It's a mix of different bedrooms, nine efficiencies for the single men and women who really don't need very much, and they want to be able to support themselves by working the modest jobs they can work. So efficiencies really meet that need. The one, eight one-bedrooms could be for small families or singles, and then the two, three, and four bedrooms are the most needed. We have a very hard time in the rental market, the private rental market, finding three bedrooms, almost impossible to find four bedrooms. Those come in houses, and they're too expensive for the vouchers that we have. So the families with five and seven children have a very hard time finding housing. So the, this, this housing will provide space, plentiful space, and also support for the people who are in need. This is sort of what we intend for it to look like, no basement, three floors. At the right end is a common space with, the area with windows is the dining area, our, our community room. And that whole complex above that dining, that community room, is all community space. We're trying hard, what we've learned about sheltering and offering support to people is that people who become homeless lose a way of relating and finding community. They, they lose an ability to establish helpful relationships. So in a community setting, we kind of change that, and it, so that community space will be just part of everybody's floor. Each floor will have a different kind of community space. These are the, this is a, a picture of the building and the parking spaces. This is hard to see, but this layout just shows the configuration of the mix of singles and families. One of the things that Churches United has realized is that the single men and women who are staying a long time, trying to find housing, are very helpful, often, to the families that are struggling there. Another, another set of adult eyes and caring heart is really helpful to a mother with five kids who can't do the laundry with all the children there. So we hoped that this would be an integrating of a kind of a community in this, in this setting. This is our, a community space. This is the second floor. Plan to have an exercise room in, in this area for women and men, and a big play area, gross motor room for children, that's F, and E is a daycare area, so that we can offer babysitting to the mothers and fathers, so that they can take courses that we provide for them, so that they can, you know, learn, learn things that are hard to learn, work on things that are hard to work on with children underfoot. This is another view of the third floor. Our, when we see these plans, it's just, it's so exciting to see a four-bedroom or a three-bedroom unit with enough bathrooms and enough closets and enough bedrooms for, you know, a variety of, of children, young and old. So I think, really, I, our, Churches United is in a really good position to bring this housing to be. I, I think we have a really broad base of support that makes it kind of an integrated part of the community. Our fifty-eight member churches are going to really be helpful. We've already gotten a gift, a pledged gift, from Saint John's Lutheran, Saint John Lutheran for fifty thousand dollars. And I think we're an opportunity for the businesses and individuals who've been helping us to really invest more in this. I think that the, the local government is really important in this, and I, you know, I came from a city where I worked with homeless people for a long time, and making, bringing an idea to fruition takes a long time in a bigger place. It is really in the DNA of Fargo, Morehead people to do the right thing quickly for somebody, not to, not to, not to fool around, thinking about it too long. Six weeks is what it took to get the sheltering churches to make, to fulfill the promise that every person in this community will have a bed. I feel that Churches United is an example of an organization that has grown from that sort of spirit, and I think, I, I really believe that we are going to be able to create this housing with a, a sense of community, to transform not only the amount of housing and the availability of housing, but to transform how, how housing feels to people, so that it really feels like home. So I thank you for your support, and you're listening to this today.
And then I'll go to the weeds.
Yeah.
Very mature. I like to dwell there. One of the things that the board and the staff of Churches United have, and most importantly, the residents of Churches United have truly benefited from, is the group residential housing contract that Clay County entered in with the shelter in two thousand ten. At that point, Churches United was in a financial crisis. They were trying to provide everything to everybody, and doing it with all contributions, basically, to the greatest extent that they could. But we see some of the most challenging folks to serve in our community. My guess is if Grant comes over and visits, he'll still know several of them from his former position. You know, they're folks who are very costly in our community through the use of other services, and it has been much more economical to enter into a group residential housing contract, which provides contract, which provides for that shelter, the food, and most importantly, those support services that people need to be safe and successful and to live stably. One of, and, you know, I was saying, I, I'm get to be the board person this time instead of the director, so one thing I failed to say right away is, we're not asking Clay County for any money from Clay County. I should have started with that. But we, we are asking for the, the flow-through of the state funds through, through the group residential housing contract. We're very fortunate that we are one of the few places that had a shelter in existence in 1996 that was a ward and lodge with support services, and therefore, an eligible location for folks moving into permanent supportive housing, to transfer their group residential housing and the funds for services to the permanent supportive housing units. If we are able to do that, and, and I apologize, I am the one responsible for this very last-minute proposed resolution. You have the B team putting together this application to Minnesota Housing, and things are popping up on us as time goes along. But if we can show them that there is a commitment at the local level, that you as a commission feel that there's a need for this type of housing in our community, and that Clay County is willing to express that through saying that the contract for group presidential housing is appropriate, it would make this application extraordinarily competitive.
Can you talk about that resolution?
Yes. Which I hope they have a copy of. And it's not, yes, but I think, have we handed them out yet? Sorry. Brian and Vicky and I all made copies.
We all made copies.
So, and apparently, we have all not given them to you.
Mr. Chair, I have some questions.
Yes, please. Go ahead, Tom.
The, can you, can you, first of all, tell me how, the other housing project that you have right to the, to the west of, how has that worked out? Has it been successful? Is it full? Is, is it, is it working well? Can you explain that for us?
Well, you've touched on my favorite subject, John. We have had experience as a, as a director of the Clay County Housing and Redevelopment Authority, of working in conjunction with Churches United for the homeless on the only two permanent supportive housing developments in, in Clay County. And in, I think there's only one other in western Minnesota. And one of those is called Gateway Gardens, and it's located directly to the west of Churches United for the homeless. We can, we began that application in 2008, and we became, became ready for occupancy in October of 2010, so we're over three and a half years in, and we have had, I'd say, a very successful run. We benefited there as well from the group presidential housing contract. We haven't had one unit turnover for more than a year. We have been extremely happy with the outcomes. People who move into that particular development have to have been homeless for a year or more, or have had it for episodes in the past three years. Most of the folks that moved in there have been, have been homeless for five to 10 years, and have been staying at the shelter for over a year. They have now successfully maintained housing. Some of them have been there since we opened in October. And it's exciting to see the life-changing impacts that that type of housing has, as well as, you know, the practical side of me, the reduced costs that we see with law enforcement, the use of emergency rooms and other services, by providing that support right there, right on-site. But since it's been so successful, that means we have this backlog sitting at Churches United, because nobody's moving out of those units. And right now, I, and I, I said it's embarrassing for me, as a director, to tell you that with all of the homeless vouchers and rental assistance we've been able to acquire, we issued 48 units of rental assistance vouchers to homeless households in the past six months. Only nine of them have been able to find a unit to rent. And we're out there, Lakes and Prairie staff are out there, the shelter staffs are out there, doing whatever we can to try and get a place for people to live, but the market is so demanding right now that a landlord is going to accept their lowest-risk tenant. We're giving five applications for every opening. The ones who are sitting at the shelter aren't getting picked. And that's why we think this is such a critical need in the community right now.
Follow-up question is the, this is permanent, what you, the gardens is a permanent place, and people stay there as long as they want. Is that what this other 41 units also will be?
Yes. And, and the goal is that some will move along, especially the families, those with lower barriers. The Housing Authority is pledging 15 vouchers to this project. Lakes and Prairies is, like Prairies is pledging eight, and the VA is pledging seven. With those, people will be able to reside there for a year and then take them and move into the private market if they're so able to. So this is really, you know, I always say, we're not here to meet any needs that the private market can meet. We're here to fill in the gaps that they can't meet. And so that's why the Housing Authority's been extremely supportive of this proposal for the Churches United entity.
One, one final question. Is the, I, I heard you, earlier I thought you said 18 churches, and I said 58 on this.
We, Churches United has 58 member churches. They give money and help with volunteers. There are 18 of those churches.
Oh, that provided shelter?
Yes. In their building.
Thank you.
Many more even of our churches and beyond provide the volunteers for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Where, where is this going to be located?
We're working on a piece of, we have a purchase agreement on a piece of property that we're working on.
We're still, we have a purchase agreement, but we're doing some environmental testing. But it is an extremely well-located location in Moorhead, on a bus line, and very close to all sorts of services.
Yeah, we started with the city, talking about, or asking them what would be the best, you know, place, and they helped us think about it.
But we might still be trying to get our price lowered a little bit, so.
We'll tell you if you, if you really want us to.
In the, the last day or so, the news has been reporting North Dakota's homeless numbers are down by like half, or roughly, isn't it? Forty percent, fifty percent?
Down? I think it's up by.
Well, I heard it's a 22, at least, it's down, but I think that's a...
It's a statewide thing, I think they're talking about, but I was just wondering if you're, you're not, you're seeing an increase here, or stabilized, or what's the status in our area?
We, Churches United has seen an increase, and part of that is because of some of the policies we've made. We, for example, used to house families for up to three months and then have them move on. We now shelter families till they're housed, because it takes so many resources in, in three months to get children to school, to get them vaccinated and connected with the main care provider, that we don't want to lose that. We just send them back, and that all unravels when you get doubled up again. So, we, and we also are doing that with vets. We have five vets, vets, they're sheltered until they're housed, and GRH is sheltered until they're housed. So we're investing a lot of time and resources, but we're actually turning it around for those folks. They're not, when I first got to Churches United, there was a family who'd been homeless five times, they were in their fifth time at Churches United, and they had three generations of homelessness. And I made a vow that fall 2010 that we had to do something different. So we increased support, case management, and we also decided to shelter them until they found a place that was really going to be home.
While we commissioned a specific study of the Fargo-Moorhead area in October of 2012 on homelessness, and we saw increasing numbers over 2009, the areas that are specifically increasing are households with children. It's families with kids that we did not used to see lined up outside of shelters that we now see. We are facing kids, we didn't in the cars, that we didn't see five, 10 years ago. I'm happy to hear that data on North Dakota, I hadn't heard it, but I'm guessing that it was probably something on the chronic homelessness, which there's been a big focus on. And what I'd love to see is this proposal be wonderfully successful in Moorhead, and that folks on the North Dakota side encourage their legislature to model the Minnesota legislature, and build a similar facility on the North Dakota side in the coming year.
I just wanted to comment about that, that report. It was Michael Carboni that was quoted this morning, I heard on the radio. And, and, but he was talking about those that are in shelters and, and not people that are in danger of being homeless, or, you know, I think our, our definition is probably broader than what, what he was saying. And he said the numbers were down considerably, but, but, you know, whether that's a trend or just at, you know, a point in time, I'm not sure.
Well, we have here, in the handout that you gave to us, there was a, an amount requested here, an amount of $6,000. Can you explain to us how that would be used?
Six million?
Huh?
That's six million from this, that's from the state of Minnesota.
Okay, so that's, you're requesting that from the state of Minnesota?
Yes, that's the housing infrastructure box.
Okay.
We are not asking for six million from Clay County.
Okay. Yeah, okay. So, and, and when do we know about that?
The funding decision will be made, I believe, October 23rd, the end of October. We've also submitted a grant application for $500,000 to the Federal Home Loan Bank in Des Moines, Iowa, and we will also be requesting funds for the Greater Minnesota Housing Fund. The Housing Authority has pledged $25,000 towards this project, and there has already been a, a, a personal donor, an individual donor, who's pledging between 100 and 250,000 dollars to this project. We anticipate numerous other individual donors will step forward as well, but we are not free to discuss those at this time.
Question.
Yeah, go ahead, Frank.
I mean, not that I fully understand all this, I'm in support of all, you know, helping the homeless and all that, you know, but I know if you're going to build something, they're going to come. You say it's not going to cost Clay County anything, but once you're a resident of Clay County and here for 30 days, don't you qualify for, for benefits from, through the social services? So it really would cost Clay County something, wouldn't it?
Well, I don't believe so, and here's why. And this is really weedy, so I'll try and be extremely succinct. We in this community have implemented something called Coordinated Assessment, Referral, and Evaluation System, or CARES for short, and it is a new way of doing business in selecting who gets access to units that, for permanent supportive housing, both the rental assistance units and the physical units. Individual programs put in place eligibility and preference requirements. All of our requirements are that somebody has to have that last physical address here in Clay County before they became homeless, before we're giving them a higher preference on our programs for these rental assistance. And so, because of the demand, we have 41 folks right now that will fill these units that are already here. I'm not gonna, people move to Clay County for good reasons. Sometimes they have a job opportunity, sometimes it's to, you reunite with family, maybe they originally from the area. But part of this coordinated assessment and referral process is that if you have supports in, from where, in the place that you came from, we will work with you to try and return you to where that support structure is at. So we're being more proactive at this point in time than we ever have at trying to get people best hooked up with supports and services that they need in order to be successful in the long term. And oftentimes, that is where they have family, friends, other employment opportunities. But I won't say that it will never, ever happen. All the studies we've looked at, it's pretty much an even flow between, North Dakota claims that we're throwing everybody across their border, Minnesota claims we're throwing everybody across this border, but part of that Wilder study, they really looked at that question, and it's about an even split. We receive and we give about equally.
Okay. Grant?
On the resolution, it says Clay County agrees to enter into a grant, contract with Churches United for up to 19 units that rank one and two group. What exactly does that mean for the county?
That is the type of contract that's currently in place at the shelter, and those are, and at Gateway Gardens, both. And group, and Pat, I was, I was, but you can explain this much better, but group presidential housing is a financial assistance support program that is funded 100% through the state of Minnesota. The county workers look to see if it's an appropriate placement, because in order to qualify, you have to be over 55 and unable to work, be disabled, or, that's basically it, right? Pretty much, have a disabling condition, or be aged and because of that have an impaired ability to work. And so this is not just for some single young guy who's out here looking for work. These are for folks who have significant barriers to being able to live independently. They are the very hardest to serve, and that is why Jane was talking about the supports that are on-site and the sense of community, and providing that support and structure. They're the folks who have been here for a long time, and have been living at the shelter for a year or sometimes.
Based on that, Rhonda, a question if you were for Pat, the, you know, so if we're, if we're going to enter into a contract for 19 units, or up to 19 units, would, would those, would those dollars come under our, our state allotment dollars?
They're state, well, I'll let Pat talk about it, but they're state funds.
So we're not talking about county funds that would go towards paying for these 19?
Correct.
Okay.
And the reason for the 19 is we currently have 19 for Gateway Gardens, and so per Minnesota statute, it allows us to basically reuse those slots as long as someone is coming out of a homeless shelter. And it allows us to provide room and board, plus a support service, money allotment to those vendors, so they can actually, say, have some case management on, right on staff along with the room and board.
Pat, would we be looking at, at getting additional funds for these 19, or would this be a transfer of funds from another place to this place?
It, it's, it's actually additional funds, but we can use the same 19 slots. It's kind of complicated. If you, if you look at the Minnesota statute, it, it allows us to reuse these 19 slots again and again, as long as someone is coming out of a shelter, because it's tied to the long-term homeless plan.
But if the 19 are already used, how can you reuse them?
GRH funds allow us to do that.
And Pat and I confirmed with the Department of Human Services, we did a one-on-one to make 100% sure that we, our understanding was correct. And the expert from Development Human Services is completely correct, because it doesn't necessarily make logical sense, but it's the way the statute is written.
Yep. And, and each...
Well, I'd like to have it make logical sense, if we're going to vote on it.
Well, for this resolution, it's based on what's available through the statutes of the state, and that's, this is what is available.
Mr. Chairman, I, I just totally support this. I think, in fact, I had, whenever I was meeting with Rhonda and Pat the other day about something else, I, I said, you know, when can we have another housing project? And they said, funny you should say that, because we're going to bring it to the meeting this week. And I think it's, it's a great opportunity, this housing, 100 million that the state allocated for supportive housing is, is a significant move, and we need to make sure we're part of that. And I, I fully endorse our being a part of that, and therefore, I would move Resolution 2014, what's the number on it? Thirty-two.
Second. We have a motion and a second. So this, I have a question here. Again, it goes to item number two on the be resolved, and the, and the contract for the 19 units. What's the time period of that? How, how long are we committing to the, these 19 units? I don't see any beginning and ending date here.
Yeah, a GRH agreement is annual, so we enter into a GRH agreement every July 1st.
Okay, so, so for the record here, the, the most we'd be doing at one time would be a one-year agreement?
Correct.
For, for renting the 19 units?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else have questions? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion's adjourned. Thank you. Mr. Chair. And then we have, oh, Brian?
Mr. Chair, just one suggestion, I guess, when they're looking at the, the layout of the place, you know, 41 apartments, is there a safe house of any height for weather, you know? Is there going to be reinforced room where people can go in bad weather? That's quite a lot of people to move out of a apartment complex in the event that there's a tornado or something along those lines. That's, that's, that's not a question, that's just a suggestion from, from that aspect of it.
Right, well, that's something they can look into. So, Don, I'm going to go to this agenda addition here, and the Clay House Housing and Redevelopment Authority requests for board chair to sign certiga categorical exclusion. I just would like to give you, have you give me a brief explanation of when I'm signing.
This is a document regarding HUD environmental reviews for any expenditure of HUD funds. And the certification of categorical exclusion indicates that the purpose that we're using the funds for, which are operating costs, such as maintenance, security, operations, utilities, you know, paying the light bulb, that type of thing, will not have a significant environmental impact in Clay County, and therefore, that use is categorically excluded from having a further environmental review.
So it all pertains to item number three?
Um, yes. That's the only use that we'll be having, and so we don't think we're going to distribute any wetlands that way.
And we should have a board authorization.
I'll move no proof.
I'll move to approve.
Second. Motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carried.
Yes, I just have one, well, this board agenda item has kind of evolved over the last couple of days, and we were hoping to add another quick five-minute presentation from the Schuet Development, who is looking at a similar application to rehabilitate Parkview Terrace. They have an application that's going in as well, and have asked for a letter of confirmation from the county, but given our time, would we, would it be acceptable to add that five minutes at the end of your board agenda today?
That would be fine. Okay. Dave, you wanna come up? Clay County Highway 18, determination of damages. We did get up this morning to view the property in question for determination of value, and so Dave, if you wanna give us a recap, and then maybe Jenny, if you have any comments that you'd like to make on this, so I'd like to see us just get this resolved today, so that project can move forward.
Sure. This is for a construction project on County Highway 18. We had about 30 parcels of right-of-way that we needed to acquire, for the most part, at average, 15 feet in width by the length of the parcel. This parcel in question is about a half mile long. There was an appraisal done, paid by the county, and offers made to the landowners. This landowner is not in our area, so communication was, wasn't as, as good as if he was local, but I think he had, from what I gathered, maybe a little question on the amount that he purchased the property for versus our appraisal. And our appraisal, up and down the roadway, in addition to their comparables they used, ranged anywhere from low to mid 6,000 per acre, up to about mid 7,000 per acre. So depending on the crop equivalency or the production index of each parcel, which means quality of land and what you're expected to get for, for bushels per acre and that sort of thing, there was kind of a range. So the appraisal came in at $7,000 per acre, and that's what we offered, and for the most part, I don't think we had any question on valuations. Do you remember any other landlord?
No, well, one other landlord did provide their own appraisal.
That's correct. There was one other, one other parcel, and then that brought it before the Board, that's right. Another landlord did have an appraisal, and that's the option. If a landlord doesn't agree with our offer, he has the option to go get another appraisal or provide one. We take a look at it and go from there. The other parcel that we were discussing here did have a little higher product, you know, productive index, so it was a small amount more, but we did pay him a little more based on his appraisal. The Reimers and Ebert parcel that we looked at this morning never did produce an appraisal. We asked several times, and we told them that we can't really move forward without some documentation, not just what you pay, you know, if you pay eight, nine, 10,000 per acre, it doesn't mean that we can go pay the same amount, you know, it's based on science, so to speak, I guess, in an appraisal, and that's kind of where we're at today.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just to outline the legal process that we're at at this point, we were at the Board, probably a month or so ago, to initiate this process. So this is a quick-take process that's similar to an eminent domain process, but it does not take as much time. The statutes allow this quick-take process for highway construction alteration, those kinds of highway projects, so it fit right in that niche. So we first came to the Board to begin the process, and we got the Board's blessing to go forward under the statute, which is 163.12, and that was passed by Board Resolution 2014-26. So that's where this all started. It's not new to the Board, you've heard this before. From there, the part that you maybe don't know, because that's the last time that we brought this to you, from that process, we filed a petition with the District Court for this quick-take process. It was served out on the registered owners who are Michael Appert and Dale Reimers, I believe they own the property in common. Like Dave said, they are not local, so that had to be done, that was out of state service that had to be done. They were provided an opportunity to come to the District Court hearing, and that was held on May 21st, 2014, and no one appeared at that time. Myself and, and Dave presented evidence to Judge Vah as to the necessity of this strip of land, and that was really the District Court's function, is to find the necessity that was needed for a public project, and that the project couldn't go forward without this taking. In an order signed by Judge Vah, on May 22nd, he found that the property in question, the taking of that property, was necessary and authorized by law, that we could move forward to the next step in the process, which then is coming back to this Board to set damages, meaning how much will we pay for this land? So the issue of should it or should it not be converted to this right-of-way use has already been decided by the District Court. Right now, the function of this Board is to determine how much that's worth and what we should pay for that. So the statute indicates that, the first part of this this morning was to go out and view the property, which we were out there this morning. To mention also, the landowners were again served with notice of this hearing today, so that's also required by the statute. We went and viewed the parcel this morning, and then it comes again here this morning for your consideration. The statute indicates that all parties that are interested can present evidence at this point in time to the Board to determine damages, and so, in that respect, I, I did get the appraisal from Dave, and I have that for the Commissioners to review. It's what he said, a .9, .896 acres cropable land valued at $7,000 an acre. In addition to that, we would need an easement, a temporary easement, I believe, for the piling of the excess material while the construction is, is going on. And then finally, the previous easement that we had with these landowners would be converted to fee simple title. And so, it comes to a total appraisal of $6,650 for these landowners, and that is what our appraisal came out. That's what we were prepared to pay and had offered previously to these landowners, and they did not take us up on that, but we still believe that's a fair amount to pay them at this time. And so, from, from the county standpoint, we would ask you to receive this evidence and take this into consideration when you're setting the amount, and then maybe, I, I'm not sure if anyone else is here in the audience that would like to speak to the issue, but certainly, they should be given an opportunity as well.
Very good. Thank you Jenny.
Yes.
I have one question on the, of the easement for piling materials. Are there damages to be paid for that if they can't farm it for, for this year?
That's the easement. It's $224 that's paid to them for the easement, for the temporary easement.
Okay.
Almost like a, like a 200 rent is essentially what it is.
That's in addition to the 6650?
Nope, that's included. It's part of it, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Yep.
All right, do we have anybody in the audience who wishes to speak to this? Dave, you have any more?
No, I said, with the exception of the one parcel that had an appraisal, most of the, all of the landlords felt the appraisal was decent. From what I, I read through the appraisal last night, again, just to kind of get refreshed with it, and one thing that kind of hit home was, some of these properties that they use comparable values were purchased in late 2012, things were still pretty high. Since then, our appraiser has seen, based on sales, farmland has dropped about 10% or so. So, you know, I think part of that is probably a little bit of the heartburn on, on the landowner, as, you know, he did pay this amount when things were high, commodity prices went down a little bit, land prices have went down a little bit, and he didn't really like to be offered less than he paid, but, you know, appraisals are based on what prices are going for, and they're going up and down. Farm market's a little volatile right now, so that's kind of what we're seeing.
Okay. That's the Board's wishes.
I'll move to approve.
Second. Okay, we have a motion to approve, and that's to approve the market value of 6650?
Aye.
Is that correct? All right, that meets your second? All right. Any further discussion? Not all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carried. We've got a Highway Committee after the Board meeting? We do. Okay, thank you. All right, then we have, okay, next we have the advertisement of the managers of the Buffalo Watershed. Brian, you wanna talk a little bit about that?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
What you have?
Before you, as a memo outlining the procedures of how you establish the managers for your watersheds, and the Buffalo Red Watershed, you have two managers that are coming up for position, and the, the one has already contacted our office and shown their desire, and that's Jerry Van Amber, and the other is Curtis Nelson, Kurt Nelson, who is your manager for Buffalo Red. We have not heard from him yet, but we have not notified him of this. So what we're asking for today is your permission to public, publish the announcement for advertisements of the watersheds managers, that you will be making that appointment.
I move that we go ahead and publish the, the notice.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Do we have a timeframe here, and are we gonna go by the timeframe that's listed here?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Okay, we got Derek and Jennifer, we're gonna talk about our Viva HSA combo plan. Good morning.
Well, thank you for having us, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Jennifer's been working hard on this transition from the double gold to the Viva HSA plan. We've had several meetings with the Insurance Committee, and this is just one more step in getting that transition to a Viva HSA. So I'm gonna turn it over to Jennifer, since she's done the majority of work on this, and we'll go from there.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So we did come before you in April to approve the plan, so we have already approved to remove the double gold plan for the 2015 plan year, and then we will implement the Viva HSA combo plan. And the combo plan is both, it gives the employee the option of the Viva plan itself, the health plan, and then they can choose to enroll in either a health savings account component attached to the plan, or they can go into the health reimbursement account, which is the Viva trust, or they can do both components if they want to put money on both sides. So those are the choices that the employee is gonna have with the new one. We met again just recently to discuss how we would fund the new components of the new plan. Currently, with, for example, the Viva 2600 that we have in place, the Viva trust, we do fund that with employer dollars, because again, the Viva trust is employer-owned, and employees can't put money into that account. So what happens is the Viva trust contribution comes off the top of the cafeteria contribution that we give, so for full-time employees, we give $888 a month for the cafeteria contribution, and off the top of that, we would take the $100 for the Viva single trust, or the $200 for the Viva family trust, and put that in there for the employees on their behalf. So the discussion about the Viva combo plan was how we were gonna fund that, and at what level we were going to fund that. So first, we talked about how to fund it, and so, of course, the Viva HRA side of that, the Viva trust, will be funded exactly the same as the 2600, so we will take the employer dollars off the top of the county contribution and put that into the HRA side if the employee chooses to have the Viva trust. The second question was whether or not we wanted to fund the HSA side of this new combo plan. The discussion at the committee basically went to, since we are already giving the employees the $888 towards all of their benefit premiums and things like that, we wouldn't necessarily force them to allocate any of those dollars to the HSA side of the combo plan, so if a person does decide to take both components, so they enroll in the plan, they elect to participate in the HRA and the HSA together, the employer dollars from the county contribution would only go into the Viva trust side. No money would be allocated to the HSA. And if the employee were to simply choose the HSA side alone, no money is going to be allocated into that HSA on the employee's behalf. They can still take their cash benefit from their cafeteria contribution, what they have remaining, and put that in there themselves, but the county would not allocate that money on their behalf to the HSA side, if that makes sense. The employee would have that choice.
So any, so any dollars that goes into the HSA side, it's a voluntary contribution on the part of the employee?
Right.
Really what it is.
So the second part of the committee recommendation was how, what level to fund the Viva trust dollars at, and the Viva 2600 has been in place since 2007, and basically, we, it looked like it's funded at half of the deductible amounts, so because it's currently at $100 a month for single, which is $200 annually, or $200 for family, which is $2,400 annually, which is a little bit close to half of the deductible amounts, that's kind of how it rounded out. So we just took that theory and went to the other plan as well. When we put the plan in place, it was a 3125 combo Viva HSA plan, but as of 2015, those dollar amounts will go up. It is scheduled to change for inflation. The IRS looks at the deductibles every year for the combo plans, and so for 2015, it will be going up in the amounts. So it will be a-
3250.
3250 and a 6,500, so 3250 for the single and 6,500 for the family. We already know that that's what the deductibles are gonna be for this new plan for 2015. So we based the funding levels on those, we just took half of those deductibles and rounded. So the Viva HRA trust for the new plan would be $135 a month for single, and the trust funding for the family side would be $270 a month. We will not make any changes to the 2600 funding at this time. That plan is actually created by the Lakes Country Service Cooperative, and it has not changed the deductibles amounts since we've had it in place. So if that ever does happen, if they ever do change deductibles, we'll look at the funding levels at that time. Currently, we're just looking at the funding levels for the new plan at $135 a month for single and $270 a month for family. So the Board action that we're looking at from you guys is to approve us to fund only the HRA component of the new combo plan with the cafeteria contribution dollars, and to set the Viva trust funding levels of the new combo plan option at $135 a month for single and $270 a month for the family side.
I trust that the rest of you understood that.
I've been involved with it, I get it.
I so fully understand, I don't make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carried.
Thank you. Thank you.
Gotta be a lot of trust involved in some of these decisions.
She's got it all under control.
Okay, we'll take this other, Rhonda, we'll take your other issue here.
Okay, all right, thank you for-
And I can make it brief, we can have other meetings planned.
Okay, so we have Brandon Eisenbis from the Schuet Company here to talk a little bit about a similar application that they are making to rehabilitate the Parkview Terrace 121-unit facility here in Moorhead. And as a part of that application as well, there is a county letter of confirmation that Pat and I intended to submit, but given we were talking about the Churches United project today, we thought you would have an opportunity to hear about this project as well. So, we're gonna turn it over.
Thank you for having me. I'm here on behalf of Tom Schuet, the Schuet Company, so he apologized for not being here today. I'm just gonna give you the rundown of our facility. We are a building just west of here, 121-unit facility, built in the 70s. Right now, we care for the individuals in our community that are 62 and older, or people with disabilities. Those people can be as, as young as they have to be to live in our building, but they have to have a sustained- but they have to have a sustained disability in their lifetime. So, those are the people that we have right now. We have quite a long waiting list, and upon those waiting lists are those people that are from Churches United that are homeless. Right now, with our current tenant selection plan, we do not have a priority waiting list to move in these homeless individuals into any of our current units. So, they kind of do sit there in kind of libido, and they are just there waiting for them to get next top, the top of our list. So, right now, what we want to do is also rehab our building. We're looking to get also the Minnesota Housing Finance Agency tax credit funds to rehab our building, also commit five to six homeless units into our building also for those individuals to be served. We're looking at about an $11 million project in total, in which the Schuett Companies would contribute 3.5 to 4 million on behalf of themselves, and looking for about $7 million in tax credits to do the rest of the rehab. It'd be a full rehab of the exterior of the building, and also the interior of the building, going into the mechanical, electrical side of things also.
So, and maybe I could just add, just to give a little more clarification about what's requested of the county for applications like this. I'm just going to read a piece to you on the county letter of confirmation. What they ask about is the purpose of the human services department involvement is to demonstrate that the applicant and the local human service department have entered into preliminary discussions about the proposal. It's important for the local human service department to have the opportunity to review the housing proposal, assess the overall need of the proposed housing, and to assist the housing developer, sponsor, and/or service provider to identify and secure service funding options and tenant income supports. So, that's the intent of the piece that the county is involved in. It's about five questions that they ask us to answer, and at the bottom of it, it indicates that this letter does not constitute a commitment by the county to fund services, and is not to be considered an approval of the proposed housing site or services. So, what we submit is really kind of confirmation that we've been informed of the project. We have had opportunities to discuss it, to be a part of giving some thoughts or inputs to it. There actually is a service piece, and maybe Pat wants to talk about that arrangement with Lakes and Prairies for this particular project. But I just wanted to give that clarity of what our role is. Generally, Pat and I work on these, and I sign them, and then we give them to the applicant, and they submit it with their applications. But Pat, do you want to talk about the Lakes and Prairies piece?
Yeah, I probably could.
Okay.
As a part of the application, they had planned to contract with Lakes and Prairies for some supportive services for seven of those units. So, say if they took in seven people that were homeless, they probably would need some additional supports, and then Lakes and Prairies would provide that. So, Lakes and Prairies is part of their application, and the money would just be in their operating revenue, or operating fund.
John.
Do I understand that this is simply to upgrade the existing facility, it's not increasing capacity at all?
Correct, just upgrading the current facility.
Okay. And the money that you're looking at is tax credits? It's not application to the state for funding? It's tax credits that it would be?
Yep, it's, when we apply for MHFA, I guess the term that they use is usually is called a tax credit application, and what we turn into MHFA. I think it's along the same lines as what Church United is. But I think that's, I don't know the technicality of it, but I always come in totally called tax credits.
Is this competing against our other request?
Well, that was our question. We were uncertain about, is this competing? It is the same dollars. It's the same pot of money. And so, we struggled with, well, do we need to make a statement that we give priority from one project to the other? You know, Churches United is new development. This is really rehabilitating existing structure. So, we think equally are important, and equally are different enough that that would be seen in the eyes of the applicant reviewers. So, but it is the same pot of money.
It is.
As we understand it, yes.
Well, it certainly is, you know, important to be done. It's, the units are 40 over 40 years old at this point, and obviously, they need upgrading. And so, I would be supportive of the request.
So, really, what we're looking for is just your support for us completing the county confirmation that would go along with their application, and that I would sign that.
And that does not include any financial...
It does not, no.
I would move for approval.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, it's the same? Carry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to our committee reports. Frank, do you have any reports today?
Yeah, dude. Last night, we had the arts meeting, Aggie Recreation Trails, and we want to compliment, Jenny was there, and Brian was there to assist me with some of the stuff that we planned on doing there. We're looking at possibly solving the board and going to individual counties and looking at that. So, I was glad to receive their help, they gave expertise help there. And other than that, I mean, that's the only meeting I guess I've gone, unless you want to hear about the trip or something.
We do, but not now.
Okay, Grant.
Well, Brian and I were at a meeting on Friday about the, Thursday, on the Aggie Trail, and a lot of issues there. Well, so, you didn't, it sounds like you did get some things resolved last night.
Yeah, it sounds like good support from Polk County. Didn't hear much count, from Norman County, but I think Polk County's looking like the same way.
And I know at our meeting, it sounded like Norman County was probably where a lot of the problems were occurring. So, but I think everybody came to the conclusion that we did need to get something resolved on this, and get it finalized, and find out where we all stood, and find out what kind of financial commitments we have, and to start to minimize those and resolve some of the issues. So, it sounds like you didn't get some of that done last night, so.
I think the way it's set up now, we found out that the joint powers doesn't really have much of an authority to do anything, you know? I mean, it's a group, and as long as everything's running good, it works okay. But once you got to do, implement something, do some litigation or anything of that, there's no power there. And it's just, and I think it's time to relook at it.
Yes, and then I had an MRCC meeting, and we pretty much discussed, you know, what happened with the legislative session, and some of the things we might be looking at next year. And some of the issues we're dealing with now is MRCC's starting to grow. We've got, I think we've got 29 counties involved now, and a lot of interest from other rural counties. And so, so that creates a whole new issues for a group like MRCC, who has been dealing a lot with Northwest and Northern counties. And so, some of the issues will, of course, change, and so how we're going to work through that and resolve that, or what we're kind of working on now. So, that was it for me.
John.
Just a comment first on Frank's, and that's, I mean, on the thing with the MRCC. I think it's really, it's really major growth. It was 18 members for first 15 years, I think, or something. It's, so it's a major change.
Twenty-two when I chaired that group.
Okay. The, just a few meetings I had that were rather informal meetings, but one that I met with Rhonda and Pat Boyer, and the adult mental health leaders, advisory committee leaders, to talk about the major issues that they brought, had brought to us last, a couple weeks ago, and they might respond. And we talked a lot about the transportation issue, and that's something I hope and there will be some suggestions that can come out of that, and we can bring to the board later, later on. I also attended the meeting recognizing Bob Bachman and his retirement from River Keepers. That was well-attended, and certainly, he well-deserved all the acclaim that he got. He did a good job. He's got a great job over the years at getting the community to look towards the river rather than away from it. And I think that's something that we need to keep alive, and honoring his legacy in that position. I went on Wednesday to the chamber legislative review meeting. It was a very interesting chamber, Minnesota Chamber person gave her impression of legislative session, and our legislators' response, or their view was somewhat different. And it was interesting to see the different perspectives. But all in all, I think everybody agrees that it was a successful legislative session, and it was an interesting presentation. I had a meeting, a short meeting yesterday with the Historical Cultural Society, working yet on their capital campaign for that exhibit. And that's all.
Okay. I just had one meeting last week, and it was a Oakport Joint Powers meeting, and we're in the process right now of going through the zoning regulations. As you know, it was in the news big time here a month or two ago, but there were some people out there concerned about the annexation and what it might look like out there. And they did have some public meetings with the residents of Oakport, and they heard a lot of what they had to say. And what's nice about it is, through our joint powers board, and Grant was there as well, we've kind of talked about those issues and concerns by the residents, and we voiced those concerns on their behalf. And so far, everything that has been recommended has been approved by our committee to go forward, move forward to the city council to adopt as the final zoning type for, there's going to be some split areas of zoning based on where it is in Track Two of Oakport. And it has to do with density issues in some areas, but it's, I think it's all coming together. I think it's coming together as what the residents up there would want. We still have ways to go. We're still dealing with the hunting issue is going to be still on the discussion block coming up here in future meetings. But for what we did accomplish this last Wednesday, I think it's a good step in the right direction for what the people up there, hopefully alleviates some of their concerns. That's all I have. Brian, hopefully it's on you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just real quickly, I had talked with Representative Markort, and wondered if they would be receptive, the three legislators, to come to the board. And so, I guess I thought I'd put that to you guys today, to see if you want to do that in the near future, have the three representatives come to a board meeting for an update as well, and maybe some dialogue back and forth. I'm assuming you would, but okay.
That'd be great.
Okay, great. We had a construction meeting last Wednesday. Things are, this is Department of Motor Vehicle out there. Things are moving along quite, quite well. We were wondering about a move of, move back to the original site on the 20th or 27th. We have decided on the 27th. We figured we'd give them a couple extra days to get everything tied down, and we needed some set dates for furnitures and things. So, that's not very far in the future. So, it's coming together. We'll have the parking lot done, and the concrete outs in front. And if you've been by there, you know, they've dug the stoop, and they've poured the foundation for that atrium, and it's, they've painted on the inside. It's moving along really, really well. So, it'll look nice when you're done. So.
Yeah, I had a chance last week to stop over, and first I'll visit with our, all of our county workers over there, who were kind of working under not the greatest of conditions right now, and kind of thanked them for what they're doing under the short term. Promised them things would be better. And I did get a chance to get over to the other side where the construction's now going on, and that's really is a neat layout. I think both the, both our staff and the citizens are going to see a big difference in the way that's going to operate. I think it's going to be a much smoother process.
And I think I mentioned this before, but I'll just reiterate it. You know, I spoke to the More Business Association here several weeks ago, and that was one of the comments they made. They said, can't you get some more help out there? Because there, it's very, very busy, especially on certain days. You take a Friday out there when they're giving tests and renewals and before the weekend. Man, that really gets busy. The organization will help a great...
Well, what people don't realize is, we did get a more help out there, and that help has started now, but unfortunately, they're stuck in such a confined area. It's just not working yet. But it'll work good when it gets them located.
Yeah. I think they really appreciate that additional help also. I attended a resettlement meeting over at Human Service Building. There were a lot of departments representative, Lutheran Social Services, the school system, social service, our social service, public health. And there was a state representative there from resettlement. And we really, I know Commissioner Angersall sat in on one or two of those before. I think this is my third one. Commissioner Waylon, I don't know if you were in on one or not, remember, if you saw me correct. But anyway, it went on quite a while from the entities about the fact that they're overworked and some of the challenges of the resettlement. And frankly, before I left, I had to go for another meeting, but I did echo the fact that, you know, these are all financial burdens, and we have a lot of demands on our system currently. And I think it's expecting a lot of the local entities to bring in more immigrant, more people. And the people that were in that room want to help. I mean, that's what they're there for. They help with housing, they help with assistance. And then to burden them more when they want to help, and then they come to the board and ask for funds, and you're limited, and then you're not helping the people that are already here. So, I got that out. I got a couple of real favorable comments from the staff that works with those things, that, you know, thank you for saying that, because we are stretched and think so. Hopefully, they know that, that yes, we care about the immigrants and things. But, you know, public health, you heard that last week, that there are some real pockets of measles, I think it was, or was it, yeah, I think it was measles, that are resurfacing in this country, because they're bringing them over, and they're bringing them into settlements that are not immunized. And that really creates a public health risk. So, there are some real things that we have to pay attention to. The art meeting on Thursday afternoon in Fertile, and I really appreciate Commissioner Waylon going along with me on that. And then last night, it really went well. I think Commissioner Gross really represents us well on that, and I think the meeting went well. And I want to extend a big thank you to Jenny, who has really rolled up her sleeves in this issue and helped us. I think they're looking for some solutions, and I think they felt there was a little bit of light last night, and it went really well. I had an administrative diversion meeting last Friday, and of course, that's pretty exciting now with the operationalization in both the House and the Senate. There's lots of things to be done. And, Mr. Chair, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Brian. Anything else? Jenny?
No, thank you.
Anything else? All right, we're adjourned.